Okay, I hereby call this meeting to order. And in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been provided by filing a copy thereof with the municipal clerk on January 7th, 2013, faxing a copy thereof to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger on January 8th, 2013, at 8:47 a.m., and posting a copy thereof on the bulletin board on the main floor of Borough Hall, 221 South 5th Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on January 8th, 2013, at 9 a.m. The fire exits are to my right and left, your left and right, respectively. I would ask members of the public, as well as individuals on the dais, to please speak into the microphones, and assistive listening devices are available. I thought I saw Rabbi Kamenetzky sneaking in. Is he still here? Ah, Rabbi, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(Inaudible)
Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Minkoff?
Here.
Councilwoman Brill Mittler?
Here.
Councilman Erickson?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilman Malley?
Here.
Councilman Potts?
Here.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Borough Administrator Kovak?
Here.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, it says the mayor will appoint the deputy clerk. Where is Kathy? Are you sure you want me to do this? Okay. There aren't a lot of exit ramps after this, so... Okay, so I need a motion to confirm.
Motion?
Motion to confirm?
Second.
Can we do this by acclamation?
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We don't get any ayes from the public, so I think we're okay. All right, so I...do I have an oath of office? And I have a Bible. They think of everything here. I'll take that if I may. And Kathy, I'm going to swear or affirm you in, and I guess we'll use that microphone.
Do you have family members here with you?
Aye.
Aye, Kathy.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform
All the duties of the office of Deputy Borough Clerk
All the duties of the office of Deputy Borough Clerk
Deputy Borough Clerk, according to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability
I do further solemnly swear or affirm
I do further solemnly swear
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
Support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state
And to the governments established in the United States
And in this state Under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people
Congratulations.
(Applause)
Kathy, let me, on behalf of the governing body, officially welcome you, and we're looking forward to working with you. We're very pleased that you've joined us, and excited to have you working here in the borough of Highland Park. I hope you'll enjoy it as much as we do. Did the first aid squad come back from its call yet? All right, so here's the way things were going to work, and if it's okay, here's what I'd like to do instead. Originally, we're going to a presentation to the family of Barry Chris, and then we have some commendations for various first responders. What I'm going to do is briefly defer that, because I'd like to have, if it's okay, I'd like to have as much of the first aid squad here as possible when we recall and remember Barry. Okay? Is that all right? That be okay? All right, good. So what that means is we're going to do more mundane business, and from a practical standpoint, that means we're just all gonna have to wait a little longer before we break for refreshments. But with that in mind, I'm going to skip, for the moment, to council reports, and I'm going to start with Councilmember Foster Dublin.
I'm gonna defer my report for tonight, because we have a big public safety night, that we're doing a lot of wonderful things. However, Tara is here, and she would like...I'm gonna defer part of my report to her. Tara?
One of the other things that I do is I'm the vice president for the Irving PTO, and I would like to point out that firefighter Peggy Brooks not only put our food drive and our operation Snowflake on the borough website, but she also came, donated her time to help us pack up, and took, like, nine angels that were left. So I know you guys usually hear the bad stuff, so I wanted you to hear some good stuff.
Tara, thank you very much.
So you'll be hearing more of public safety later on, but I'm gonna embarrass someone in the room, and we all wanna wish Gail a happy birthday, 'cause today's her birthday.
In case you're wondering which Gail, that's Councilmember Brill Mittler. She's right over there, if you wanna get the camera to do a close-up.
And you thought the cake was for you, too.
All right, that's enough levity for the next two minutes or so. Okay, that brings us to Councilmember Potts.
Good evening. I just wanted to make a couple of brief announcements. This coming Thursday, here in this very room, at 7:30, the Teen Advisory Committee meeting will be held. For those teens who are actively involved or who wanna be joining, feel free to come out this Thursday at 7:30 to that meeting. Also, our seniors' holiday party's gonna be on Monday, December 16th, and that's gonna be held at the Italian Bistro. You do need to make reservations for that ahead of time if you're planning on attending that senior holiday party. And that's gonna be starting from 11:30 and going until 2:30 on that Monday, December 16th. There's, of course, plenty of activities going on, things to get involved with, both sports and also for the seniors as well. So check that out down at the Senior Youth Center on our website. I also wanna mention the Christmas Day Dinner, which is gonna be held from 1 to 3 o'clock on Christmas Day at the Senior Youth Center, and there's opportunities to, obviously, either make reservations, make donations, or volunteer. So please call our Department of Community Services at 732-819-0052 to be involved, hopefully, in that free holiday dinner on Christmas Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Welkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. Unlike Elsie, who's deferring, I've got...I'm gonna take advantage of this great crowd, and we've got a bunch of very good stuff coming up, and I wanna take this opportunity to let everybody know. First off, on Monday and Tuesday, we have two special information sessions on the Affordable Care Act. On Monday evening at 7 o'clock in this room, Congressman Frank Pallone, our congressman, who is also key in writing some of the legislation and passing it through Congress, will be here to talk to us about the Affordable Care Act. Following him will be Enroll America and the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, two nonprofits that help people get enrolled and help spread information about the Affordable Care Act. The following day, on Tuesday, at 5:30, down in our Senior Rec Center, we will actually have all three insurance carriers that are approved in New Jersey with certified counselors to help enroll people. If you have specific personal questions, you can pull them aside and ask them about your specific needs. They will be helping you fill out applications and taking applications on the spot. This is a real special two-session event, and we welcome everybody, so please join us. On December 26th, our Human Rela...oh, excuse me, that...those two events are sponsored by our Board of Health, with great thanks to our Chair, Diane Heimlich. On December 26th, we will be celebrating Kwanzaa with the lighting of a canar candle at Main Street on December 26th at 6 p.m. Look for that announcement coming up. That's through our Human Relations Commission. They will also be sponsoring our Martin Luther King Jr. Event. That's our annual event. It will be held Monday, January 20th, at 7 p.m. in our Senior Rec Center. Last year, we had over 200 people attend. We really like to bring out the crowd, especially in the midwinter. It's such a good event. We have lots of performances, and this year, our guest speaker will be our new freeholder, Kenny Armwood, and our Martin Luther King Humanitarian Award recipient is Deborah Morgan. Well deserved for her. Tonight on the agenda, we would like to pass a resolution honoring National Homelessness Day, which is December 21st, the longest...sorry, the shortest day of the year. And this is to bring awareness to homelessness and things that we're doing to try to combat that here in Middlesex County and throughout the country. So we'll pass this resolution tonight. There'll be a brief ceremony that evening from 5:30 to 6:30 at the Reformed Church, and they are sponsoring the event. The borough has been asked to help them co-sponsor it. Also, our food pantry had a very successful Thanksgiving turkey distribution. I just wanna read a brief note from our Chair, Beth Leach. She says, "Just wanted to update everyone on a very successful Thanksgiving distribution. We served more than 95 families on Thursday morning, and nearly half of that on Thursday evening. With Saturday, they'll be right at their weekly record of 150 families, served about 50 percent more than a regular week. Special thanks to the guys from DPW. They were great. Four of them went with two large trucks to pick up 150 turkeys. It was a good thing, because, as I mentioned, we got a surprise of nearly two tons of produce. All of this was handed out. Special thanks to David Day and his van, plus thanks to Matt, Judy, Ann, Sam, Kathy, Frank, Maddie, Harry, Mike, Laurel, Esther, Susan, Chandra, Amanda, Maureen, Connie, Nicole, Alex, and whoever else we embarrassingly left out. It was a really wonderful event. Thanks to Muffin for her amazing shovers, and to volunteer Lynn Platt and her husband, who once again donated hundreds of fresh sweet potatoes. And special thanks to Jamie and Kate Ashenow..." The thanks don't stop here. "Jamie and Kate Ashenow, who using coupons and a few hundred dollars, have contributed more than $4,200 in food to the food pantry this summer and fall. The November donation alone included more than 400 items." So thanks to everybody who helped on that. And lastly, our library will be sending out their annual fundraising drive letter, so look for that in the mail, and please help us and respond. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Brill Mittler?
Thank you, Mayor. Main Street has been very, very active. We had a fantastic menorah lighting ceremony last week. Thank you very much to all the volunteers who put the menorah together, and also to our fire department, who showed up to make sure everything went smoothly. We also followed then last Saturday night with a tree lighting ceremony. In typical Highland Park fashion, we started with the first holiday on the calendar, Hanukkah, went into Christmas, and with...through the Human Relations Commission, we'll be celebrating Kwanzaa later this month. It was really wonderful to see...I was there the night that the menorah was lit. All the young families that showed up, people were...the building was packed, it was raining a little bit, but that didn't stop people from walking out of the offices at Main Street to stand on the street and celebrate the first night of Hanukkah. It was really, really wonderful. Also, if you haven't yet used your shopper's card downtown, you are missing out on savings for your property taxes. I know I use my shopper's card at the gym I belong to, I've been using it at several of our restaurants, and it's...I get messages that tell me how much I'm saving on my property taxes. Please, if you did not receive your shopper's card in the mail...I believe we have some additional cards at the Main Street office. By using your shopper's card, not only are you saving on your property taxes, but you're helping our small businesses in town, and when you help them, you help create jobs in our municipality, and everyone wins. So if you have any questions on that during the break here, I'll be happy to answer them for you. Otherwise, feel free to contact me via my email address, which you can find on our Additionally, as you can see, there's plenty to buy for the holidays or for birthday presents locally in our downtown area. So please, when you are looking at your lists, whether it's birthdays, or holiday shopping, or any little gifts or big gifts that you would like to give, please visit our local merchants. They have wonderful merchandise, and I actually did all of my shopping for the holidays here in Highland Park. You can do it, too. The Gratitude Graffiti Project wound down at the...on Thanksgiving Day. It ran for 33 days prior to the holiday. Our store windows were covered with thanks, and I want to personally give thanks to all the volunteers that made this happen, as well as the merchants. Finally, our Public Information Committee has been working on our e-news, which you receive regularly, our Nixels, our Facebook updates, and they are in the midst of improving our website right now. And I think that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Also, you can email birthday wishes to Gail. So you can find that address on the website. If not, you can see her for that during the break as well. Okay. It only comes once a year, so we're just taking advantage of it.
Thank you. Thank goodness it's only once a year.
Councilman Erickson?
No report tonight.
Okay. Council President Malley?
No report.
Borough Administrators, report?
No report.
Borough Attorney?
And no report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, then, I'm going to disappoint everybody. I don't really have a report, because there are a bunch of speeches I'm gonna be making, but it had been suggested to me last week, and unfortunately, I didn't get it posted in time. I'm going to read you my brief, we'll call it Thanksgiving, Hanukkah, Christmas, Kwanzaa, and other holiday time-of-year greeting, because I think it's very appropriate. So if you'll indulge me for just a minute, I think in the spirit of what Suzie was just talking about, what Gail was just talking about, and I think absolutely in the context of all the giving that's going to be recognized this evening of a different type, I'd like to share this message with you. So please indulge me. "We all have periods of joy and sorrow in our lives. Some days are easier than others. These triumphs and trials are woven into the fabric of life. But the intersection of the holidays that we celebrated last week, Thanksgiving and Hanukkah, and the others that I mentioned which are upcoming, are infused with gratitude and hope, and should enable us to reflect on whatever good we have in our lives and realize how much we have to share that others would value and appreciate. Giving is a tangible way to show gratitude, both unnecessary and integral to the word Thanksgiving. Giving elevates our sense of gratitude. In addition to the critical tangible benefits to the recipient, everyone knows the rush that comes from sharing with others who may be in need, whether that need is physical, financial, emotional, communal, or perhaps even spiritual. This is hard to lose to those who live in Highland Park. We don't just talk about helping others. It's embedded in our daily routine. It's one of the reasons we love it here so much. We are more than just a community of thankers, we are a community of givers and doers. So, as I wish everyone a wonderful holiday season, on what was written on a beautifully sunny and cold, and this evening is warm, day, let me express my gratitude to our entire community of givers and doers, who make Highland Park special as such a warm and caring community." Okay, so with that, I'd like to...I don't wanna limit public discussion, but I'm going to ask, in recognition of the other business that we have this evening, which is of great import, is there anybody from the public that would like to be recognized for comment for a few minutes? Any issues or questions that need to be addressed? Okay, I'm gonna continue with the business meeting, because we'll be done with that in just a couple of minutes, and then we can get on to the other important business we have tonight. Clerk, can I ask you to report on the introduction of the amendment to our salary ordinance for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance to provide for and determine the rate of compensation of each officer and employee of the borough of Highland Park and the method of payment of such compensation has been introduced in writing by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Okay, can I have a motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Brill Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to move to the consent agenda. I have the following resolutions to be adopted, items 14 through 27 inclusive. To approve budget transfers, bills list, taxi operator's license, taxi owner license, another taxi operator license to designate December 21st as National Homeless Persons' Memorial Day, to approve payment to the public safety building architect, to approve renewal of health services contract with Middlesex County for 2014 and 2015, to authorize the borough's contribution to the redevelopment agency, to approve the pay estimate number three and closeout change orders for Lucas Construction Group, Inc. for improvements to Wayne Street, to authorize credit to water and sewer account, 34 South 7th Avenue, to amend professional services agreement with CME Associates for the 2012 curb and sidewalk replacement program, to approve payments to CGP and H, and to refund overpayment of taxes on Block 136, Lot 16. So I need a motion to approve all of those items.
Motion to approve, second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Brill Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Malley?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, can you report on the introduction of the ordinance? Are we tabling this, the open item, on conveying the lot for the Habitat? We're gonna table that. So do I need a motion to table that, or no? Ed?
I know, it's just...
Okay, so we'll keep that as an open item. Okay? All right. This is the second public discussion opportunity and the last one for this evening. If anybody has an issue that they would like to raise, a question that they'd like to ask, now would be a good time to do so. Okay, so, seeing that there's none, David Howie, did the squad come back, or we're still...
We're just waiting for one member. He's not as great as us.
Okay, so we'll start with the police? Okay. By the way, now's a good opportunity for me to welcome back Chief Risco. I didn't say you were missed, I just said it's a good opportunity to welcome you back. Of course you were missed. Okay, the chief took a brief medical leave. We're thrilled that he's healthy, er, and back with us. We're looking forward to seeing you again in uniform at the appropriate time. And are we ready to proceed with our recognitions? Okay, first of all, thanks to the public and all of our first responders for indulging us while we did our business, but we'll be done with the meeting for the night after all these wonderful recognitions are complete.
Before we get to the awards, just to follow up on what the mayor said, I had the occasion to be out on a medical leave for about eight or nine weeks, and I just wanted to acknowledge the outstanding job that my friend, colleague, and captain of our police department, Scott Golden, did in my absence. It's a comfort to know that the second in charge is such a capable individual, and it's certainly nice to come back to a clean desk and very few problems. So I think that the borough, the police department, and certainly I am very happy to have, and we're very fortunate, to have a captain like Scott Golden. Not that I would expect any less, 'cause I know his work ethic, but I wanted to publicly acknowledge his efforts and say, "Thank you, Captain. Great job."
You know, Chief, I hardly noticed you were gone. Scott did such a great job.
That's what I was afraid of.
Don't worry about it.
Did you know you weren't gonna work alone this evening?
I know, I didn't hear from you, but thank you. Only kidding, the mayor did call, and was very...everyone was very caring during that time, so thank you, everyone. This evening, we're going to honor police officers and dispatchers for a...they're gonna be recognized for their high level of dedication and teamwork that was shown during an extensive search for two burglary suspects on September 30th, 2013. One will receive an exceptional duty award, the rest will receive honorable service awards, and the dispatchers will receive proclamations from the borough. I'm gonna ask Captain Golden, since I was out during this incident, and he was actually on scene, I'm gonna ask him to come up, explain what occurred that evening, but before I do, I'm gonna call the individuals up, and I'll ask that they line up behind me, if they would. Lieutenant Gary Penicello?
I'm sorry, Chief, maybe what we'll do is call everybody up, and then we'll have one round of applause for everybody at the end. How's that?
That's fine. Lieutenant Thomas Hamel, Sergeant Joseph Alara, Sergeant Jason Culver, Sergeant Elon E. Lankrey, Officer Adrian Karen, Detective Donald Newton, Detective Nicole Young, she is not with us tonight due to her personal issue. She's not able to be here, but she is being honored. Officer Ted Pardo, Officer Kevin Garrity, Officer David Soden, Officer Brad Segal, Dispatcher Janet Marsick, and Dispatcher Peter Archibald. Since this is one of two council meetings per year where we honor our first responders, I should point out that the Highland Park First Aid Squad will also be honoring several members of their departments for two separate calls a little later on, so...anyway, Captain Golden, if you wanna explain what occurred that evening. Okay?
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for the kind words of Mayor. I'll take care of payment later for you. Thank you.
I hope the camera recorded that. That's just what I need, thanks.
I'm just saying what the point would be, so...let me get out of the way here. First of all, I would like to congratulate all the officers and dispatchers here. You did an outstanding job that day, and just let me give a brief synopsis of what occurred. On September 30th, at approximately 2:45 a.m., the North Brunswick Police Department alerted neighboring agencies of a burglary that had occurred at a gas station in their town in which the suspects were last seen in a black Acura. At around 3:30 a.m., Sergeant Wenskoski was on routine patrol and observed the black Acura in the BB Big parking lot, which is located on South 2nd Avenue. As he pulled into the parking lot, the suspect fled the vehicle, running towards the back of the building and jumping over a fence. An immediate search of the area proved negative for the suspects, however, after reviewing the surveillance tape from the store, a better description of the suspects was obtained, and a search was initiated. At around 7:30 a.m., Sergeant Lankrey, who was out searching for the suspects with other officers, observed the two suspects in Donaldson Park. Upon seeing Sergeant Lankrey, the two suspects fled into the heavily wooded area. After a brief foot chase, one suspect was apprehended by Sergeant Wenskoski. Officers then began to search along the wooded area on the Raritan River from Donaldson Park to the Albany Street Bridge. During this time also, Sergeant Alara observed suspicious vehicles that were circling in the same area. When the vehicle was stopped by officers, it was found that this driver was actually there trying to pick up one of the suspects. He had received a cell phone call from that suspect. By using the suspect's cell phone number, they were able to get a location on it from the cell phone company, and it was found out that the subject was no longer in Highland Park, but had actually fled the area. The suspect that was apprehended was charged with conspiracy to commit to burglary, criminal attempt, and receiving stolen property as a black Acura that was observed by Sergeant Wenskoski was actually reported stolen on a France-on-Tamship. The investigation also revealed that the phone lines to the BB Big store were cut in order to disable the alarm, so Sergeant Wenskoski just happened upon that, just prior to the phone lines to the actual burglary taking place. The incident began at 3:30 in the morning and lasted until about noon time, just about eight hours. During this time, the officers searched through heavily wooded and hazardous conditions, with some of these officers being on duty since about 6 p.m. the night before. None of the officers wanted to stop searching. Their high level of dedication, perseverance, and teamwork exhibited by them, and the dispatchers as well, was outstanding. I wanna thank you once again for all your hard work, an excellent job. I want to thank you once again for all your hard work and excellent job.
Just to clarify, these individuals are receiving honorable service awards. The individual that is receiving a higher award for initiating this with his observance, observation skills, and police work is Sergeant Wenskowski, who is receiving an exceptional duty award, which is a different honor and a different ribbon. So Sergeant Wenskowski, would you come join us for your award, please?
Elsie, do you have anything you want to add before I read the proclamation?
As usual, Highland Park Police officers are at our beck and call, and even when we're sleeping, demonstrate that they're on the job and that they're being keenly aware of what's going on in the community, and it shows that they're not just here in and out, but they're aware of what's going in our community while we're sleeping, keeping us safe, because as they said, this started in the wee hours of the morning, and they spent eight hours working on this, and they were able to detect that the wires were cut in the store, keep us, again, showing how dedicated they are to our force, and thank you so much.
Thank you. I just want to amplify that and say that, you know, we're giving, I think it's fifteen awards of one kind or another to the police force for this one act of heroism, which is not only a testament to your teamwork, it shows and it should demonstrate tangibly to everyone in Highland Park and to anybody that comes to Highland Park that wants to do us harm, that we will spare no effort and that we have a truly remarkable team of public safety professionals and volunteers that will do anything and everything they possibly can to keep us safe at any and all times. We saw it demonstrated during Sandy, we see, you know, very visibly and very tangibly, this is another tangible example, but this happens day in and day out without fanfare and without awards, and so, you know, I felt that I needed to say something instead of what I usually say, which is how can you say thank you to somebody who would put themselves in harm's way for you? This is at least one way we can say in some small measure, thank you. So thank you all very much. And with that, we have an individual proclamation for each of you, but I'm going to read one of them, and then we have one for each of the officers that were involved in this. Whereas on September thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, North Brunswick Police notified surrounding towns that a burglary had just occurred at a business in their town, and whereas the suspects were last seen in a stolen black Acura, and whereas at three-thirty AM Sergeant Derek Wenskowski observed the stolen black Acura in the BB Big parking lot with the suspects attempting to gain entry into the business, and whereas the suspects fled on foot, and whereas officers set up a perimeter search which resulted in the arrest of a suspect, and whereas officers continued to search for the additional suspect in heavily wooded and hazardous conditions, whereas it was ascertained through further investigation that the second suspect fled the area, whereas the observations, dedication, perseverance, and teamwork of these officers and dispatchers prevented a burglary to Highland Park, to a Highland Park business, recovery of a stolen vehicle, and arrest of a suspect. Now therefore, I, Gary Minkoff, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby issue this special commendation to the following police officers and dispatchers for their role in recovering a stolen vehicle, preventing a burglary to a Highland Park business, and arrest of a warrant suspect. Lieutenant Gary Penachella? Lieutenant Thomas Hamel? Sergeant Joseph Alara? Sergeant Jason Culver? Sergeant Derek Wenskowski? Sergeant Elon Langtry? Officer Adrian Karen? Detective Nicole Young? Detective Donald Newton? Detective Theodore Pardo? Officer Kevin Garrity? Officer David Soden? Officer Brad Segal? Dispatcher Janet Marsick? And Dispatcher Peter Archibald? On behalf of the people of Highland Park, I offer them my heartfelt thanks, heartfelt thanks for a job well done.
Excellent work. All right, one more thing on the police side of this. As I mentioned, Captain Golden was not only the officer in charge that day, but he actively took part in the search for the individual too, so I think I'd be remiss if I didn't honor him with a service award also. Would you come up, Captain? I know you're not expecting this, this must be your lucky night, enjoy it. But again, he was not only the officer in charge, but he actively was involved in the search, and we appreciate his efforts, and Mayor, you want to read his proclamation?
This is not, this is your life, so you don't have to worry too much.
More paper than that.
Whereas on September thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, North Brunswick Police notified surrounding towns that a burglary had just occurred at a business in their town, and whereas the suspects were last seen in a stolen black Acura, and whereas at three-thirty AM Sergeant Derek Wenskowski observed the stolen black Acura in the BB Big parking lot with the suspects attempting to gain entry into the business, and whereas the suspects fled the area on foot, and whereas officers set up a perimeter search which resulted in the arrest of a suspect, and whereas officers continued to search for the additional suspect in heavily wooded and hazardous conditions, whereas it was ascertained through further investigation that the second suspect fled the area, whereas the observations, dedication, perseverance, and teamwork of these officers and dispatchers prevented a burglary to a Highland Park business, recovery of a stolen vehicle, and arrest of a suspect. Now therefore, I, Gary Minkoff, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby issue this special commendation to the following police officer for his role in recovering a stolen vehicle, preventing a burglary to a Highland Park business, and arrest of a wanted suspect. Captain Scott Golden, on behalf of the people of Highland Park, I offer you my heartfelt thanks for a job well done.
I'm indeed fortunate to lead a very talented and excellent police department, thank you all for your efforts. Now I'd like to call up Captain David Lowenstein from our Highland Park First Aid Squad, so he can present the words to his individuals.
So before I start tonight, there's something that I say often, but it's not heard often by a lot of people, so I really do just want to say it again. One of the things that makes our job so much easier is the fact that on ninety-plus percent of our calls, the guys in blue are there at the house helping us every inch of the way, besides the fact it makes it easier to find the address because there's a black and white car in front of the house. They help lift, they help assist, they help doing everything. Guys, I can't thank you enough, it just means so much to us, thank you. So there's two calls that we're going to pick on tonight. Both of them are a little difficult for me because one involves me and the other involves my family, but after thirty years of riding, I finally got my wife and now my number three child to start riding, so it's kind of exciting for me as well. On October the fourteenth...
I think we've saved perhaps the most, certainly the most poignant, if not the most meaningful recognition for last this evening, and it's last but certainly not least. What I'm going to do is, there are a couple of things I'd like to read, and because Mary Lou just had surgery recently, I'm not going to make you stand up while I read these things, but we'll call you up in a couple of minutes because we have a special presentation we're going to make to you and the family. So a couple of months ago, we dedicated Barry Chris Way right in front of the First Aid Squad Building, and I read a speech that day and I read a proclamation that day, and for those of you who couldn't join us, I hope you indulge me because I think it's appropriate that we share this with the entire community. So I'm going to read those two remarks, I'm going to ask Elsie if she has anything to add, and then we'll make a special presentation, okay? To paraphrase a quote from John F. Kennedy, "A nation reveals itself not only by the people it produces, but also by the people it honors, the people it remembers." Today, Highland Park reveals itself with bittersweet taste of, with the bittersweet taste of honor and remembrance, bitter because it was a little less than a year ago that we lost a true friend and hero, Barry Chris. But it's my hope that there is some sweetness in our choice to honor and remember Barry today, and in so doing, perhaps we can be both uplifted and inspired. Many of you know that this is not the first time the community has honored Barry. He was honored as a Volunteer of the Year in Highland Park and twice commended with resolutions for his heroism as a member of the Highland Park First Aid Squad. Just under a year ago, we gathered as a community, we gathered as a community in a moving tribute to Barry, albeit under the most trying of circumstances, but at least we were again able to show him how much we loved and cherished him for the kind person he was, the kind of volunteer he was, the kind of father and husband he was, and the kind of friend he was. So what kind of person was Barry? Numbers can help tell us but a small piece of the story. Seven thousand calls, First Aid Squad Captain for four terms, Assistant Captain for ten terms, Trustee for ten years, a total of forty-two years in all, of selfless devotion and commitment to the community that he treated like his family, a man whose family shared him so selflessly with us. But those numbers don't tell you who Barry, that Barry was always calm, reassuring, and an expert presence in responding to those in need, whether first locally or during a time of national tragedy in the aftermath of September eleventh, two thousand and one. Above all, Barry valued the precious gift of life, and he devoted much of his life to saving and protecting the lives of others. It was a horrible irony that he was taken from us way too soon, but through countless acts of bravery, he sought to rescue victims of fires, floods, accidents, acute health episodes like heart attacks and strokes, and a litany of other such emergencies. He stopped counting the number of lives he literally saved after the number passed several dozen. But for all of that and much more, we all owe him our gratitude, because his nobility in his pursuit, in his pursuit to save others added something to all of our lives. And just as he sought to save lives, he sought to help in giving of life, literally. On seven different occasions, he transformed the anxiety, fear, and uncertainty of women in labor who were stranded at home into the joy of the birth of a healthy child. And his kindness didn't stop with people. During and after Hurricane Floyd, Barry spent an entire night in Bound Brook in the First Aid Squad's boat, rescuing not just people, but pets in distress. When Barry wasn't actually saving lives, he was doing all he could to advance the cause of public safety. He spent much of his spare time maintaining the squad's vehicles and boat. He served as part of the Borough's Office of Emergency Management. He starred in a local documentary, prepared for Highland Park High School students to educate them about the dangers of drunk driving. Barry trained Highland Park Middle School students in CPR and first aid. One can't help but hear those details and be impressed, but today I'd like to talk about the broader and I hope enduring impact of Barry's legacy, and legacy was extremely important to him. I don't mean legacy, however, in the usual sense. Barry's motto was allow people to teach you so you can teach those that come next. As a mentor, instructor, and friend, Barry trained and advised countless members of the squad, but Barry literally took his work very personally. He was the son, brother, and father of First Aid Squad members. You might even say that for Barry, the Highland Park First Aid Squad was the family business, and he saw it as his responsibility to ensure its continuity, professionalism, and vitality. I'd suggest, though, that for all of this, it's just possible that there was something very subtle about Barry that endeared him so much to us. His courage was inspiring, his bravery was unquestionable, his personification of the CPR code, never give up, was without peer. But in a time when people seek headlines, recognition, and the fleeting futility of fame through television, movies, and social media, Barry worked not for recognition or reward, he served because it was the right thing to do. He served because he loved his community, and he felt his service would be the most tangible and valuable expression of his love and devotion. Barry Chris left us a legacy of what public service truly means because Barry was a role model of what a public servant must be. Devoted, ready to answer the call, a willingness to go above and beyond under virtually any set of circumstances, to be part of a team, and when the situation warrants, to be a leader. Barry understood that you serve the public because you want to live in and be part of a community, to leave it better off than when you arrived, rather than simply take for granted that public service is a job done by somebody else. The myriad of things, great and small, that have transformed Highland Park from a wonderful community into an extended family, to make it the special place that we all cherish, didn't just happen by, happen by themselves. Barry understood this, and he gave selflessly and tirelessly for decades. He didn't wait around to be asked, or hope that somehow our community might become better, he did all he could in his own way to make sure it did happen. Which leads me to what impressed me most and what I'll always remember about Barry, his humility. If you met Barry, you would not have known of his prolific achievements as a member of the squad unless somebody else told you, and Barry would not have encouraged, in fact, he likely would have been embarrassed by this situation. He was gracious and considerate, a genuine and kind person with a heart the size of Highland Park. So today, even though Barry would probably blush, it's time for us to thank him and his family for his heroism, bravery, dedication to service. We reveal ourselves today by honoring and remembering him by dedicating Barry Chris Way, so that the legacy he left us and the inspiration that legacy should provide us can be properly preserved, perpetuated, and promoted. To the Chris family, on behalf of the Borough of Highland Park, it's my honor and proud duty to say thank you. We are revealed today as we should be by thanking you for sharing Barry with us and by allowing us to remember and honor him by dedicating Barry Chris Way to add his name permanently to the, permanently to the lexicon and geography of Highland Park. It is our hope that this is a suitable tribute to a wonderful person of refinement, generosity, commitment to community, our humble and devoted hero, Barry Chris. He has been and always will be missed, but he will always be loved and honored and remembered. And I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas Barry Chris dedicated long life resident of, lifelong resident of Highland Park, and whereas Barry Chris was born in Highland Park, lived in the Borough throughout his entire life, and whereas Barry Chris served on the Highland Park First Aid Squad for forty-two years, and whereas Barry Chris was Captain of the First Aid Squad for four terms, and whereas Barry Chris devoted much of his life to saving and protecting the lives of others, rescuing victims of fires, floods, accidents, acute health episodes, and a litany of other such emergencies, and whereas Barry Chris educated Highland Park students about the dangers of drunk driving and trained them in CPR and first aid, and whereas Barry Chris served as a mentor, instructor, and friend to countless members of the First Aid Squad, and whereas Barry Chris was a role model of public service going above and beyond in virtually any set of circumstances, as part of a team and a leader, and whereas Barry Chris was a devoted husband to Mary Lou and father to Peter and Scott. Now therefore, I, Gary Minkoff, Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby dedicate South Eleventh Avenue to be named Barry Chris Way, so that the legacy he left us and the inspiration that legacy should provide us can be properly preserved, perpetuated, and As Mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, and on behalf of the residents of the Borough of Highland Park, I do hereby express the thanks and appreciation of the community for his many years of dedicated service. And now, I would like to ask the Chris family to come up, because we have a special presentation for you. Elsie, before I make this presentation, would you like to make a few remarks?
With pleasure. When I first served on, I came onto the council, and one of the portfolio I had was public safety, which I have again, and one of the persons that I met with was Barry, and he was always so calm, and no matter what was going on, if he was... And no matter what was going on, if he was explaining something to you, it was the calmest way that he would explain. And he just reminded me of that movie, they say, "Cool Hand Duke," because he was always so cool, so calm, and so collected. And it was a pleasure to be with Barry, to learn from Barry, and to have him as a mentor to me, as a new council coming, councilperson that came on. And he was just wonderful in his teaching and his approach. He was just always so gentle and so calm, no matter how stressed out I may be, or the situation may be, he always kept it cool and calm. And when we were looking at, to say we were going to honor Barry with a street naming, we looked at Drive, we looked at Circle, but then we, I, the more I thought about it, it had to be Barry's Way. And that's why it's so fitting that it's called Barry Chris Way. And Barry is truly one of Highland Park's treasure. And thank you for giving him to us for so many years, and just want to thank you, your family, for all that you gave, gave Barry the freedom to do for us here in Highland Park, and we're truly grateful.
So, in recognition and remembrance of Barry, I want to present you with this proclamation. And in the box, we have a key to the Borough of Highland Park.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Okay. I think we need a motion to adjourn the meeting. So moved?
Second.
Okay. Have a good night. If we don't see you before the new year, happy holidays. Have a good 2014. Thank you all for coming. Congratulations, and thanks again to everyone.
And we have cake.
And we have refreshments right outside. It could be a birthday cake.